Unless he comes in in the next thirty seconds.
Yeah. Time up.
Well, I'm gonna let you know right there, I'm all, I'm all good. You ain't got to ruin me or my neck. Me and my good friend.
Are y'all, are y'all ready? Y'all ready? Are y'all ready?
Yeah, yeah.
Ms. Barbara's there.
I got you.
Is that on in there?
I got you.
All right, folks, we'll call the meeting to order. Brother Bradley, would you leave us out of order, please?
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, thank you today. Thank you for every blessing that's ours. Thank you for the rain that we've gotten. Just continue to guide us as we do business to take care of our city. Just God, everything we do, and when we look to you for guidance, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with dignity and justice for all.
Ms. Barbara, could you call the rule?
Baker.
Here.
Bradley.
Here.
Edens.
Here.
King.
Here.
Bryce Sanger.
Thompson.
Here.
So, we got a, we have a public hearing we need to go execute before we move down the agenda, so let's do this real quick. Uh, the City of Clarksville, Arkansas, has called for a public hearing on the topic of a proposed petition from the University of Ozark to vacate University Street, Clarksville, Arkansas. The purpose of the meeting is to receive public comments on the City of Clarksville's request. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with Arkansas Code Annotated fourteen three oh one, three oh three. All public comments will be taken into consideration. The rules for the meeting are, all speakers must sign in, speak plainly, and give their names and addresses, as well as the business they represent, if any. All comments should be addressed to the hearing body. Comments should be relevant to the topic. It should not be of a personal nature. Please avoid repetitive comments. If there are a large number of speakers, including many who are part of a group or organization, please ask for a representative to speak on behalf of the group or organization. Unruly behavior such as booing, or hissing, or harassing remarks are prohibited. The public comment period is considered to be open at this time. Please raise your hand to be recognized. So let me pull up on the screen what we're talking about. And orientate you, this is University. This is University Drive, right here, next to the old Sunny Austin Armory here. And we're proposing to move the trailhead from its current location here in the old armory, east across college, and roughly in this vicinity right here. And then letting the university have this, now we'll maintain utility easement, Roy. But vacating this street back to the university. We've had a number of near misses and accidents right here, and then tragically this year, we had a really bad accident here. So the purpose is to do away with crossing that street altogether, to be able to make a right turn in and come back here, and then we'll have no vehicles pulling out, coming down that hill. The wall right here is completely blind. We have a mirror, right, Stanley? Up on this as a, as a safety mechanism, so it's kind of threefold. It's mainly for safety, so if there's anyone in the public who would like to comment on that, please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll close the comment period. The public comment period will close at this point, and the public hearing will close at this point. Okay. So we'll turn to the agenda now. Do we have approval of the agenda? There's one item needs to be removed, for sure, item F. And Ms. Thompson, the one item that you requested be on there is under legal review. Talked to John Wilkerson about an hour before we got here.
Understanding that, yes.
So with the, the deletion of item F, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Ms. Barbara?
Baker.
Yes.
Bradley.
Yes.
Edens.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Do we have a motion for approval of the minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Second. Ms. Barbara?
Bradley.
Yes.
Edens.
Yes.
King.
Yeah.
Thompson.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Under no unfinished business, under new business ordinance to vacate University Street. Ms. Barbara, could you read the ordinance?
An ordinance to vacate University Street within the city limits of Clarksville, Arkansas, where his petition was duly filed with the City Council of the City of Clarksville, Arkansas on the twenty-first day of June, two thousand and twenty-four, asking the City Council to vacate all portions of University Street located in Clarksville, Arkansas. Whereas after due notice, as required by law, the council has, at the time and place mentioned in the notice, heard all persons desiring to be heard on the question, and has it certain that the street described herein has therefore been dedicated to the public use as the street is described herein, but it has not been actually used by the public for a period of at least five years, subsequent to the filing of the plat, that all the owners of the property abutting upon the portion of the street to be vacated have filed with the council their written consent to the abandonment, and the public interest and welfare will not be adversely affected by the abandonment of the street. Now therefore, be it ordained, that the City Council of the City of Clarksville, Arkansas, Section One, the City of Clarksville, Arkansas hereby releases, vacates, and abandons all its rights, together with the rights of the public generally, in and to the street designated as follows. University Street, Plattedas Railroad Street, as shown on the College Edition plat between Johnson Street and Highway one oh three, Plattedas Lee Street. Section Two, a copy of the ordinance duly certified by the City Clerk or town recorder shall be filed in the office of the Recorder of the County and recorded in the deed records of the County. Section Three, all laws, ordinances, resolutions, or parts of the same which are inconsistent with the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed to the extent of such inconsistency.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Barbara. Roll open it for discussion, questions, or comments? Seeing none, would entertain a motion to suspend the rules and place it on a second reading?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Barbara?
Edens.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Bradley.
Yes.
I'll slow down, sorry.
An ordinance to vacate University Street within the city limits of Clarksville, Arkansas.
Yes, sir.
I don't know if I missed it.
Sorry.
I don't know if I missed it, but I didn't hear the section where it was going to be an easement retained for the full width for the existing utilities. So I probably add section four. That says the city will retain an easement for the existing utilities. Because there's order to our gas, like it.
Good catch.
Thank you, Morgan.
I make the most we're approved with those stipulations.
Got to have the third reading.
Yeah, I just put we'll, we'll retain the existing utility easement, correct? It's a.
We're changing these.
Easy.
The city will retain an easement for existing utilities. Is that the wording?
I think that's how it should be worded.
I think it was retained an easement. It's worded several different ways, but I was just retaining, you know, abandon the right of way, but retain an easement for the full width of the right way for existing utilities. By the way, if there's another utility that wants to come in, they will have to not just, it won't be allowed to them by right. They will have to work with the TCU and have these things to make sure that it's a compromise. Worked out with also the college.
Yeah, we need a motion to suspend the rules, place it on its third reading.
So moved.
Second. Ms. Barbara?
Thompson?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
King?
Yeah.
An ordinance to vacate University Street within the city limits of Clarksville, Arkansas.
Any question, any further, any other questions, comments? Morgan, we miss anything else? Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Barbara?
Baker?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
King?
Yeah.
Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Do we need to clarify that it needs to add that stipulation, that added language?
Be in the record somewhere.
I think we need to make that a motion to adopt the ordinance with the amended language.
Yeah.
Section four in language.
Yep.
So moved.
Second.
Sorry, I'm sorry, Barbara.
Bradley?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
King?
Yeah.
Thompson?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Uh, six B is resolution for transfer of property to the county?
Resolution authorizing the conveyance of real estate, where the City of Clarksville, Arkansas seeks to convey certain real property to Johnson County in exchange for Johnson County agreeing to maintain certain roads at Lake Ludwig into perpetuity. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City of Clarksville, Arkansas, one, that it is the intent of the City of Clarksville to approve the conveyance of the real property set forth herein below Johnson County in exchange for Johnson County agreeing to maintain certain roads at Lake Ludwig into perpetuity. Two, to the specific real property to be conveyed to Johnson County as described as follows. Track one, description of part of the northeast quarter, northeast quarter of Section eight, Township nine north, range twenty-three west, in the City of Clarksville and Johnson County, Arkansas, being more particularly described as follows, and as shown on the survey plat surveyed by cornerstone land surveying on six five twenty-three for Johnson County job number twenty-five dash five sixty-five, commencing at said iron pin for the northwest corner of the said northeast quarter, northeast quarter, then along the north line thereof, south eighty-eight degrees, twenty-four feet, zero inches, east two hundred feet to a set iron pin for the true point of beginning, then continuing along said north line, south twenty-eight degrees, twenty-four foot, zero, east three hundred fifty-three point seventy-three feet to a point around iron pin bears north zero two oh three point fifty-seven, east two point six seven feet from this point, then south oh two degrees, oh three feet, fifty-seven inches, west six seventy-eight point seventy-three feet to a found iron pin on the north right of way line of Porter Industrial Road, then leaving said right of way line, south eighty degrees, fifty-six feet, twenty-four inches, west fifty-seven point twenty-eight feet to a set iron pin, that's north zero two degrees, twenty feet, nineteen inches, east two hundred and thirty point oh two feet to a set iron pin, then it's north eighty-seven degrees, thirty-nine feet, fifty-two inches, west two ninety-nine point seventy-eight feet to a found iron pin, that's north oh two, twelve feet, forty-three, east four fifty-five point forty-eight feet to the point of beginning containing four point oh one acres, more or less subject to any easements or right of ways of record. Track two, description of part of the northeast quarter, northeast quarter of Section eight, Township nine north, range twenty-three west, in the City of Clarksville and Johnson County, Arkansas, being more particularly described as follows, and as shown on this survey plat surveyed by cornerstone land surveying on six five twenty-three for Johnson County job number twenty-five dash five sixty-five, commencing at the set iron pin for the northwest corner of said northeast quarter, northeast quarter, then along the north line thereof, south eighty-eight degrees, twenty-four foot, zero inches, east two hundred feet to a set iron pin, that's south eighty-eight degrees, twenty-four feet, zero inches, east three fifty-three point seventy-three feet to a point a found iron pin bears north oh two degrees, three foot, fifty-seven inches, east two point six seven feet from this point, and south eighty-eight degrees, twenty-four feet, east three hundred and fifty-seven point forty-seven feet to the true point of beginning, a found iron pin bears north oh two degrees, twenty-one feet, forty-four inches, east one point nine seven feet from this point, then south zero degrees, twenty-one feet, forty-four inches, west six eighty-one point seventy-three feet to a found iron pin on the north right of way line of Porter Industrial Road, then leaving said right of way line through the following courses, south eighty-seven degrees, fifty-four feet, nine inches, east one hundred and thirteen point thirteen feet to a found iron pin, then with a curve turning to the right with an arc length of one oh five point forty-five feet with a radius of one hundred and forty-five point seventy-nine feet and a forward bearing a distance of south seventy degrees, twenty-three feet, fifty-three inches, east one oh three point seventeen feet to a found iron pin, south thirty-nine degrees, eleven feet, sixteen inches, east one oh three point oh four feet, and south thirty-six degrees, twenty-nine feet, twenty-five inches, east two fifty-five point seven nine feet to a set iron pin on the east line of said northeast quarter, northeast quarter, then leaving said right of way line, north zero degrees, forty-one feet, fifty-eight inches, east nine thirty, nine ninety-three point eighty-seven feet to a state monument for the northeast corner of said northeast quarter, northeast quarter, then it's north eighty-eight degrees, twenty-four foot, zero inches, west four twenty-nine point oh one feet to the point of beginning containing seven point six eight acres, more or less subject to any easements or right of ways of record. The Johnson County Judge Herman Houston has expressed the county's willingness to maintain the roads at Lake Ludwig into perpetuity in exchange for the city conveying to the county the real property described herein above, the roads to be maintained. Lake Ludwig by the county consists of a loop beginning at the intersection of State Highway twenty-one and Round Road thirty-five sixty-six with a midpoint located at County Road thirty-five sixty-six and County Road thirty-five sixty-eight, and a loop concluding at the intersection of County Road thirty-five sixty-eight and State Highway twenty-one, for the mayor and city treasurer are hereby offer us to execute a deed. Any other documents necessary to carry out this conveyance of real estate, the mayor has offered us to enter into an agreement with the county, a set forth herein above.
You've got some good lungs. That's a lot of reading. Uh, you know, we, we are blessed and honored to have a dignitary for two months in a row with us now, and I think it would be prudent of us to just pepper him with all kinds of questions since we got him. Judge Houston, appreciate the county considering this. For sure, and I know this is, this is the land next to the sheriff's office where the district court sheriff's will stand, and then you'll continue to help us with the roads out the lake, is the gist, right?
Yeah.
We're not gonna have our Judge Houston there. Who knows when? Might as well pepper him now. He's here. Get him.
I don't have any questions. I appreciate him being willing to do it.
No, no questions. Entertained a motion to approve this resolution? So moved. Second?
I second that.
Ms. Barbara?
Thompson?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
King?
Yeah.
Thank you, counsel. Thank y'all. Yeah, appreciate you. Appreciate the teamwork that's been going on with them. Uh, six E, personnel committee recommendations. I think Barbara needs a motion to adopt those changes. One was holiday and holiday pay, remove the radio operators, right?
Yeah, there was just what, two or three?
Yeah, the fireman bonus structure, and then employee benefits.
I make the motion we approve those changes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Barbara?
Baker?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
King?
Yeah.
Thompson?
Yes.
No, six D. You ready, Barbara? Give me a thumbs up, and I'll go. Six D is the ordinance for rezone of the Bligh property?
An ordinance adopting recommended amendment to the official zoning map for the City of Clarksville, Arkansas, whereas the City of Clarksville has here to fore adopted a zoning ordinance, official zoning map to guide and influence the allocation and arrangement of land uses, the development of land, and the future building within corporate limits of the City of Clarksville, whereas a petition was filed in accordance with provisions of said ordinance to rezon certain lands within corporate limits of the City of Clarksville. Whereas a public hearing was held on said petition on July twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, the planning commission approved the boundary change on July twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, recommended that the City Council adopt the change, whereas said change was reviewed in its entirety and found to be wholly acceptable. Now therefore, be it ordained, that the City Council of the City of Clarksville, Arkansas, Section One, the following described land shall be rezoned from zoning classification R one C three to I one. All of said property being located at I forty in Clarksville, Arkansas. Section Two, all ordinances or parts of ordinance in conflict here with or hereby repealed.
Susan, I know, y'all know, it's probably hard for y'all to see up there. But this is that piece of property. Uh, this is, let me back up here. This is Pix Sweet here. And this is Big Danger. And the Bligh property is this section right here.
Do we have sewer and electric out there?
There is long, there is electric along the.
There's electric here to the water. Yeah, there's water, there's electric right there. And I don't, I don't think this project, they need, they'll, they'll need the water at some point.
Eight inch frame next to the Big Danger Road. And there's a raw water line that crosses that. Right there next to the interstate, you can see the raw water line coming from there.
There's no sewer? How big a building are they gonna, they gonna build a bit, build, Morgan?
I think City's a good project, answered.
Who owns this property?
It's Zach Bligh.
So this parcel, we, we intended to bring this before y'all. Last City Council meeting.
Unfortunately, the property owner lives out of state, and we were working with him to get the proper documentation and get it in front of y'all in timely manner. And that was, the soonest we could do it was this month. That piece at the bottom, um, uh, abuts to the DVN property y'all rezoned uh, last month, uh, and it is intended for the, the combined cycle generation that will be supplementing the uh, hyperscale data center project.
So you got hyperscale data center here, one here, power in between.
And at this time, that would wrap up all of the rezone
Yeah.
issues we had for those properties being acquired.
That would clear the way for construction, site plan development, and all those things. They're, what they're afraid to do now is, is start moving forward and this not get rezoned.
May I ask, Roy?
Mr.?
Roy, do you have any hesitation with this project going in below the water treatment plant? Okay.
Questions, comments? Entertained a motion to suspend the rules and place it on its second reading?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Barbara? Thank you, Steve.
Bradley?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
King?
Yeah.
Thompson?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
An ordinance adopting the official zoning map for the City of Clarksville, Arkansas.
Any other questions? None of the entertained a motion to suspend the rules and place it on its third reading? Second?
Second.
Ms. Barbara?
Edens?
Yes.
King?
Yeah.
Thompson?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
An ordinance adopting recommended amendment to the official zoning map for the City of Clarksville, Arkansas.
Any other questions, comments? Motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Barbara?
King?
Yeah.
Thompson?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Uh, six G is, bring them back up, six E. The change order Montgomery and the reconciliation. Morgan, do you want to come up, kind of talk through that in just a minute? It's actually a good change order, this one is, right?
Save money.
Yeah, fine. Ahead of time and on budget.
I want to do that.
For once.
So for auditing purposes, we have to do a reconciliation change order on our line item contracts. Just go in and zero out all the quantities based on the actual measured quantities that were used in the job. When we bid it, we bid individual items with estimated quantities. And so there's a difference between the actual measured quantities. I try to get it close, but not exact. That's the first section of the change order, and then the last section of the change order is a couple additional items for a fence that was installed after the job was bid, that we had to work around and modify, add some additional drainage, uh, just to work with. So what you wind up is what you have in front of you, a change order with a deduct of thirty, what is it, thirty-two thousand and some change, or thirty-three thousand and some change. I can't remember the number, but yes, sir. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
So I just want to make the council and the public aware that Morgan, run, we run into several issues, widening Montgomery, and the utility knows as well, been great to work with. We had so many issues. Anytime you start widening roads, you gotta move utilities. It's, it, there's a lot of, lot of friction points there, and the two staffs worked very, very well together. There's always, there's always where you bump heads, always, but we've managed to work the room and, and did a great job. But this man right here solved, um, when someone potentially lost a, a driveway or a parking spot, he figured out a way to make a slower drive and create spots. And the folks were even happier than they were before the road was built. So um, I would like to give this man a, a round of applause, simply for the words he has done. I appreciate it.
That's what I'm here for.
Might as well step there, I'm gonna pull you and Cody up, Steven on the next one. I think we need a motion from the council. If there's no other questions to approve this change order?
So moved.
Second? Ms. Barbara?
Thompson?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
King?
Yeah.
Thank you, counsel. Uh, the six F, the Monroe Building, it's not ready. Gordon Wil, Gordon Wilburn from Cutec Rock is almost done with it. So we'll have it for the next meeting. G is the change order on MPB and Monroe Building. Cody, come up, Steven?
Yeah.
Let's talk with the council a little bit, what we're talking about here.
Sure. We decided to, to work with Van Horn on doing the renovations for the Monroe facility, former Monroe Building. And those folks have been able to find some efficiencies in cost and renovation. Some of our priorities obviously needs to be the roof, the HVAC system, and some of the ADA compliance is, as well as the office space, which has some old tile and stuff in there that needs new flooring. So I think we're not attached two documents for y'all to review. One is the Van Horn Construction Scope of Work. And the other is the Description of Work, which is an Excel spreadsheet breakdown of the costs associated with the scope of work. Now that we have this, we received this last week, we have this over to Gordon Moore. He's gonna attach it to the lease, which we've negotiated with our end user. And get it back to them for any last minute considerations, and we should have that to y'all next month.
Who's the end user?
I can't say yet. I mean, I, I can't. I can't say yet.
But they've already been to a public meet?
They haven't signed a lease. So, yeah. Their CEO came to town last week. We spent some time with them and things rolling, so. Any questions?
The one, these funds now, three hundred thousand of it, right? The council's already appropriated. Where does the other funds come from?
So.
Of point six?
Yep, so there's one point five CDBG funds. Um, I know we've spent some already out of the city account.
Can you explain what that is for folks at home?
Sure. Community development block grant, it's a.
CDBG, can, community development block grants?
Right, so that's, uh, the, the state is working with the end user to provide funds to help them renovate the property. And that is obviously a state initiative to bring more jobs to Arkansas. And us partnering with them means more jobs for Clarksville.
So how, how?
I'm underselling that a little bit.
Well, I was gonna, I was gonna ask you, how did, how did that come about?
Let me explain that. Steven's underselling that. The city, through that, his efforts and the mayor's efforts, got one point five million dollars to invest in city property and increase the value, address a, not dilapidated, but a building that needed work. The roof need to be replaced, the HVAC need to be replaced. And throughout this process, I mean, we had, I, I know four of probably the best roofers in the state come look at that building. And one of them managed to, that are capable of doing the work. There's some good roofers, but that's a different type of roofing system and a really large roof. And one of them figured out a way to save about six hundred thousand dollars, roughly. But that one point five million is strictly due to the mayor and Steven's work on getting that funds based on job creation to invest in city property.
Awesome, yeah. Well, you know, there was, uh, we recently had, you know, the, the company leave that building. Who, who's been a staple in this community for over forty years. We hated to see them go, and all those families that lost their jobs, and sixty years.
Sixty years.
Yeah, my mom worked there.
Long time. So to see them go was a sad day, but to see a light company coming in who's got a global outreach is just amazing, and not only will we be able to get those families back into employment, but probably about twice that amount. So that's a fantastic thing, and being able to say that their product is made in Clarksville is gonna put us on the map like Walmart or Tyson. It's a, it's that big of a thing. So I'm really proud of Steven, real proud of our whole staff. Morgan and Cody had to go in there and look at that building. Roy, uh, I know that your guys have been over helping us with the, with the power and everything, so it's been, it's been a wonderful team effort on this thing, so we'll get them in there running. I think they're gonna have two or three lines. That's gonna give you a big industrial customer. It's gonna help. Certainly ain't gonna hurt you any, so.
Yep.
The power washing looks good.
It, it looks really good. They did a great job in the trees. I mean, they did that in a couple of days.
Yeah, we just, we, we promised not to take the trees down. We did take. Yeah, we just, we, we promised not to take the trees down. We did take two trees down, I'm sorry. But we did raise the limbs up and, because the, the leaves were the biggest detriment to the roof. And so we, we did raise the limbs up to try to alleviate some of that. And, um, we still got a lot more work to do. We've got some ADA compliance on the bathroom. The council's already given us that looks good funding to do that. It's gonna be wonderful when it's done, so.
Once the renovations are complete, we'll set up a tour and anybody's welcome to do a walk around.
So what do you need? You just need a motion to approve this change order and?
Yep. Yep, that's it.
Counsel?
I make the motion we approve and move forward.
Second? Ms. Barbara?
Bradley?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
King?
Yeah.
Thompson?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Six H is aquatic flooring quotes. Um, just to give you some back history on, on what's going on the pool. We, we have a, a serious issue with slippage. Now, it's a pool, I, I get that. Um, but we, we had a really, really bad fall. I don't know how long ago it was. I think the lady either sprained her wrist, broke her, something in her shoulder. And we had made some commitments to try to do something to fix that floor. And we used, we used mats, we used carpets and everything's kind of defeating us. So I, I had, uh, staff reach out to get some epoxy coating quotes to have that shark skin. Now, nothing is full, full non-slip, but you can get the non-slip texture. And this is what we had them quote. The, the problem is it's, it's above the, um, um, threshold for competitive bidding, so we'll, we'll have to competitive bid it out. I just want to ask, I wanted to put it on here to talk to the council a little bit about your opinions on epoxy, not just, not just the shower area, but the entire foyer. And then all the way around to the new, to the new, um, MPV, because it's all old, it's all, we can all just redo the entire floors. Let us get bids and quotes and see what that comes out to be. Because if we don't do something about the slipping, uh, so, that was a pretty bad fall. And it's really, so, and it's not the first one. There's been several. Several and, and, uh, I think we have to do something. So if you're okay with us moving forward, I'll, I'll have this, do some bid, try to find some solution for it, bring it back to you.
If there's something else, I'll make a motion to authorize that to move forward.
Get the bids and the epoxy, to about epoxy in the, the whole floor. Second? Ms. Barbara?
Edens?
Yes.
King?
Yeah.
Thompson?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Uh, Brian? There he is. You want to come, next item is this airport taxiway extension?
Yeah.
Y'all want to come in, you got Brendan with you?
Good evening. I'm Brendan Omen with Garver. Uh, we've been the engineer for the airport for quite a while now. Um, I had two separate issues for tonight, um, both related to the taxiway extension project. Several years ago, the airport did self-fund with the help of a state grant, a runway extension. Um, this is a project to extend the taxiway to match that extension and, uh, give the airport full use of that extension that's already in place. It's needed, it's first and foremost, I'm safety issue, it reduces back taxing on the runway itself. It's also just kind of airfield layout best practice for the parallel taxiway to match the length of the runway. And thirdly, it's going to, uh, it's the next step towards attracting larger aircraft and hopefully commerce, or, or, or I'm to the airport. Uh, the two issues I have are the contract for the design, that's our contract, Garver. Um, if that's approved, I also have the grant application to submit to the FAA. For any of you who are new, the FAA funds ninety percent of these projects. The state or the local, the city will be responsible for the ten percent. And at the conclusion of the project, that can be reimbursed through a state grant. So at the conclusion of the project, the city would be out zero dollars. But, um, that, I'm ten percent would have to be unfunded. So I have the contract for, um, design services and the FAA AIP grant application. And anyone has any questions, be happy to answer those.
How much would be the total?
The grant application will be for a total of one hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. Or, I'm sorry, the total design cost will be one hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. The federal share of that, or ninety percent, would be one hundred and forty-six thousand, seven hundred dollars. So the state, or the, um, city would be responsible for sixteen thousand, three hundred until the conclusion of that project, at which time it would be reimbursed by the state.
But we have to approve the sixteen thousand three.
And, and, and the grant?
Yes.
In the grant.
In the grant.
Yes, so the contract for, um, design services for Garver is for a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. To, uh, that also to get up to the hundred and sixty-three for the project. That also includes around forty thousand dollars for mitigation of the wetlands, which is required by the FAA. So all in all, that contract includes the design services, the wetland mitigation and a independent fee estimate, which basically just is a third party evaluating our fee. That's been performed already and we were within the acceptable range.
So basically you need us to, to approve you as the, the contractor. And then we need to approve the sixteen thousand, three hundred dollars.
The, I'm not sure how the council needs to onboard it. The contract for design services is for a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. If that's approved, then I would assume you'd vote on a motion to apply for the grant, which would reimburse the ninety percent of that cost.
So I, Brendan, I think you, what I'm seeing, you need a motion to approve Garver of the design services.
Yes.
You need a motion to apply for the grant application.
Yes.
And then you need a motion to approve the contract.
Well, the design services is the, the contract. I don't think we need that third one.
Well, I, I got three different items here. Design services being a hundred and eighteen thousand, contract being a one-ten. According to this, the paperwork that we were given.
Uh, I'd be happy to look that over for you. The contract I sent over was for a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. That's for the design services.
So on exhibit B of the other one, there's another one to scout, one-ten? Sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
No, you're fine. I've got it up here.
Trying to make sure I get it straight.
Yeah, I'm showing a hundred and fifty-one thousand.
Yeah, that's for the grant.
That's for the total grant?
Mm-hmm. If you keep flipping back, these things have paged on, I don't think.
May have gotten the old copy of it. I've got a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars here.
Yeah, I see the one, exhibit B's got the one-eighteen. And then you flip back about halfway through, there's the grant application that shows one-thirty-nine, one-thirty-five-nine plus fifteen thousand one for a total of one-fifty-one. And you go about another quarter of the page back, there's another exhibits B, I think it is. The city of Clarksville Taxiway Extension Fee Summary. And it's got one-ten. Is that a duplicate or?
The contract is what gets inserted into the grant application and that'll be the hundred and eighteen thousand dollar one.
Okay.
So the approval of the contract for a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars and then the grant application for a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. I've got a clean copy here that I can leave you with if that'll help and I can send as soon as we're done.
I'm just doing a quick impression, a quick, hang on. Twenty twenty-four Project Administration, ten thousand. Survey Services, fifty-two hundred. Geotech, sixteen thousand eight. Wetland delineation, sixteen thousand versus sixty-eight thousand. No, 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 back up. So they're different. So there's one here that's got twenty twenty-four Project Administration, Survey Services, Geotech Services, Final Design Services, Bidding Services and Grant Closeout for a hundred and ten. And then there's one that's got twenty twenty-four Project Admin, ten thousand. Survey Services, fifty-two hundred. Geotech, sixteen thousand, eight hundred. Wetland Delineation and Permitting, sixteen thousand. Design Services, sixty thousand. Bidding Services, five thousand. And then Closeout, five thousand for one-eighteen.
The one-eighteen is the most current.
Okay. So you're looking to one-ten as well?
Yep.
So if you come forward in that same packet towards the front, you'll see it looks, you see this page right here that says, City of Clarksville Taxiway Extension at the top right here? The page just before that is the same thing, but it says one-eighteen.
Yep.
So we're, Brendan, you're saying you're the one, one-eighteen?
The one-eighteen is the most correct.
Mine says one-ten.
It's the one-sixty-three and that's the grant amount, what the, or the total project cost. The grant would be ninety percent of that.
Well, this is what I'm looking at. Are you guys looking at this packet or are you looking at this packet?
Yeah, because we got two packets.
Okay.
There's two packets in there, that's the problem.
So should we be looking at this one? The agreement one? I didn't see it.
Eddie, you don't have the one-eighteen?
I didn't have the one-eighteen.
I see the one that's.
They don't want the one-eighteen either.
Isn't that in that agreement one right there?
Oh, is it this one?
Oh, here it is.
It's, it's.
You did? Okay. Yeah, Brendan, we, we have, we have two different applications, so we need to make sure.
Yeah, um, I can leave these with you. I, I'm printing straight from what I sent. I brought these up here, but I'll make sure we're on the same page. But I am confident that the one-sixty-three total project cost and the one-eighteen for the design contract are the most current and accurate.
So there's a separation between the construction cost and the design cost?
Yes, this grant is for, I'm design only. Uh, that's based on how the FAA awards funding. Uh, they only have so much funding available each year. And, uh, they recommend, this is on their recommendation that we break up the design and construction of, of this project. The construction is scheduled on their funding schedule for fall of twenty twenty-five. That'll be under a separate grant.
So you, you would come back?
Yes. Based on bids received on the design we're going to formulate.
Yeah, so construction will be done in, be done in twenty twenty-five fiscal year?
It's penciled in for fall of twenty twenty-five.
Okay. So Barbara, how, where would, where would they rotate that? Where would they rotate those funds through?
Economic Development, that's what we used last time.
Yeah.
So basically we need to appropriate sixteen thousand, three hundred dollars out of Economic Development. That's what I'm understanding.
That'll be part of it, right? It'll be appropriating the upfront, right? That would be reimbursed.
Brian, y'all are gonna need access to the, how soon to the, for example, the one-eighteen?
But, Brendan, I think it just works like all the rest. There's the FAA, once the grant is accepted, the grant's awarded and accepted, we can draw on the grant and for payments. Unlike the state projects, which the city has to fund upfront.
Upfront and reimbursed, yeah, okay.
Ten percent matching, which is typically been paid by the, our top partner, Eonautics. That is something the city, like, we have to manage projects completely. The, the state, we apply for a grant from the state and they keep money in there for that. That is part of what they do, they match the ten percent, so cities don't have to pay.
Brendan, do you know what that ten percent not to exceed amount would be?
It's.
Sixteen thousand.
That's the, that's the not to exceed sixteen thousand?
Yes, but, well, the grant's only for this amount. If we don't submit the state grant application until the conclusion of, of the project. So if there's any changes to it or any modifications on the federal level, then the state grant doesn't have to be changed.
I was thinking, Brian, like we did on that last word, it, we had to appropriate it all upfront, then we drafted off and then got reimbursed. State side, okay.
You don't have to approve no money until the grant's accepted, right?
Well.
The mayor does have to sign the application. However, you all want to handle that is up to you.
They appropriate the sixteen thousand, three hundred? Right, to submit the application, that's our matching ten percent?
Yes.
You approve the contract and the sixteen thousand and then the grant application. That's it, that should be over.
And the contracts were one-eighteen?
One-eighteen.
Okay.
Can't confirm.
Can that just be one big motion?
I think so, yeah.
Yes.
The umbrella motion.
Yeah, the umbrella motion. Everything we just said. Second? All right, so we need a motion to approve the Garver contract, design contract and, and appropriate sixteen thousand, three hundred from Economic Development.
Yes.
And approve the grant application. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Barbara?
King?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Thank you, Brendan.
Sorry for the confusion.
I'm sorry.
No, thank y'all.
Um, six J is the power purchase agreement. Roy, you want to talk your way through that one a little bit?
Well, the second contract.
Roy Young, Clarksville Connected Utilities. Uh, this is for the extension of the power purchase agreement we have with the White River Holdings. The, we've, uh, this is a Independence County hydroelectric we've been dealing with since the nineties, I believe. It's went up, but, uh, this is a seven-year extension. We just had a one-year extension extended last year and it was at a point, uh, oh-four-nine-five cents per kilowatt hour. And this is gonna be at a point oh-six cents per kilowatt hour for the next seven years. But it's a, a flat six cents. There's no, no adders. And I had them take off the bonus adder that was built into the last contract, which will save us a little bit, because they have been outperforming the performance issues. So they've been getting some bonus checks, so we will save a little bit there. And, uh, I really think it's a fairly good price. Uh, if we stay with, uh, OMPA, it saves us quite a bit on their bill. Even if we move off of OMPA, we get the hundred percent of the capacity that comes from this generation, which gives us, you know, some capacity, which we will have to have. Even if we move away from OMPA, we're gonna have to go out on the market and purchase more capacity. It's something that, it's just the law you have to have for your energy use. So that's just capacity we don't have to go search for already. So I'm just looking for y'all's approval to go ahead and proceed with this contract. Any questions?
How many megawatts is it?
It's, uh, I think it's right around eight.
This for seven years?
Yes.
From, from the first this year?
October four.
October first.
October first.
Yeah.
That includes capacity?
Yes, hundred percent of the capacity. We buy a hundred percent of their energy they produce, get a hundred percent of their capacity. It's actually, they, last year, they produced about twenty-five percent of our power. So it's pretty good, pretty good producer.
Are we too late on this? It says they needed.
No, no, I, I called him and as soon as this meeting's over, if you approve it, I, I call him as soon as I get the notification. Well, as soon as this meeting's over.
Gotcha.
Let him know. Yeah, I, I got an extension. I'm good to tomorrow morning.
Okay. I was concerned.
I make the motion we approve the extension.
Second? Ms. Barbara?
Thompson?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
King?
Yeah.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Ms. Barbara, can you read, uh, six J's of ordinance?
An ordinance authorizing rights and fees to be charged by the Clarksville Connected Utilities, delegating authority over certain fees and for other purposes. Whereas the city of Clarksville, Arkansas is the owner and regulator of a municipal utility providing electric, water, wastewater and broadband services. Whereas on the eighth day of May, twenty twenty-three, the city adopted ordinance number twenty-three nine-eleven, creating a commission known as the Clarksville Connected Utilities Commission of the city of Clarksville, Arkansas. The commission for the purpose of operating and managing the city's municipal utility in accordance with Arkansas Code fourteen-two-oh-one-two-oh- in accordance with Arkansas Code 14201, to a one in the authority granted by the city, whereas the ordinance number 23911, the city withheld from the commission the authority to establish rates and standard fees, except for the extent that the commission charges less than the amount authorized by the city, and whereas the commission has determined that certain electric rates charged by the commission are inadequate to recover the cost of providing electric services, and that a rate adjustment is necessary to maintain financial stability within the electric utility, whereas the commission has determined that certain fees related to wastewater treatment are inadequate to recover the costs related there to, and seeks authority to establish fees that reflect actual costs, whereas the commission has requested the city to adopt the rates and delegate authority over fees as described in this ordinance. Now therefore be ordained by the City Council, City of Clarksville, Arkansas, under Section 1, residential electric rates. The Clarksville Connected Utilities is hereby authorized to charge for residential electric service amounts that do not exceed the rates described on Exhibit A Electric 2024, which is attached to this ordinance and incorporated herein as is set forth word for word for purposes of this ordinance. Residential electric service shall mean service that is provided to a home for household purposes. Clarksville Connected Utilities may assign an appropriate commercial rate to any home where the predominant use of the premises, not separated, needed is used for commercial or other purposes as determined by the Clarksville Connected Utilities. B, any home with commercial or other activity that causes average electric consumption or peak demand to exceed the average electric consumption or peak electric demand of other residential electric customers in the city by more than 100% more than three months in any calendar year. C, a home that has an electric peak greater than 50 kilowatts at any time. Two, light commercial electric rate. Clarksville Connected Utilities is hereby authorized to charge for light commercial electric service amounts that do not exceed the rates described on Exhibit B Electric 2024, which is attached to this ordinance incorporated herein as is set forth word for word for purposes of this ordinance. Light commercial electric service shall mean electric service other than residential electric service. Exhibit A Electric 2024, special electric service. Exhibit G Electric 2024, that is provided to a location that has a peak electrical demand that is less than 50 kilowatts. Section 3, medium commercial electric rates. Clarksville Connected Utilities is hereby authorized to charge for medium commercial electric service amounts that do not exceed the rates described on Exhibit C Electric 2024, which is attached to this ordinance incorporated herein as is set forth word for word. For purposes of this ordinance, medium commercial electric service shall mean electric service other than special electric service. Exhibit G Electric 2024, that is provided to a location that has a peak electrical demand that is greater than or equal to 50 kilowatts but less than 150 kilowatts. Section 4, heavy commercial electric rates. Clarksville Connected Utilities is hereby authorized to charge for heavy commercial electric service amounts that do not exceed the rates described on Exhibit D Electric 2024, which is attached to this ordinance incorporated herein as is set forth word for word for purposes of this ordinance. Heavy commercial electric service shall mean electric service other than special electric service. Exhibit G Electric 2024, that is provided to a location that has a peak electrical demand that is greater than or equal to 150 kilowatts but less than 500 kilowatts. Section 5, industrial electric rates. Clarksville Connected Utilities is hereby authorized to charge for industrial electric service amounts that do not exceed the rates described on Exhibit E Electric 2024, which is attached to this ordinance incorporated herein as is set forth word for word. For purposes of this ordinance, industrial electric service shall mean electric service other than special electric service. Exhibit G Electric 2024, that is provided to a location that has a peak electrical demand that is greater than or equal to 500 kilowatts. Section 6, power cost adjustment. Clarksville Connected Utilities is hereby authorized to charge electric service customers for increases in the cost of wholesale power above budgeted amounts, and for electric service customers for decreases in the cost of wholesale power below budgeted amounts according to the formula attached. Exhibit F Electric 2024, fuel adjustment charge will not apply to security light service. Section 7, special electric rates. Clarksville Connected Utilities is hereby authorized to charge for special electric service amounts that do not exceed the rates described on Exhibit G Electric 2024, which is attached to this ordinance and incorporated herein as is set forth word for word for purposes of this ordinance. Special electric service shall mean one, security light service, and two, service provided to the City of Clarksville, Arkansas, Section 8, and then the Clarksville Municipal Code, Section 4.04.02, Section 4.04.21, the Clarksville Municipal Code, hereby leaving the place with the following, Section 4.04.02. Electric rates for Clarksville Connected Utilities, the Clarksville City Council hereby declaring the following rights schedules. Adjusted reasonable hereby direct Clarksville Connected Utilities to charging electric customers an amount that does not exceed the amount shown for electric service provided to the customer classes described below, as indicated in the administrative fact of a conflict in the November 15, 2024. A, residential electric service rate shown on Exhibit A Electric 2024. B, light commercial electric rate shown on Exhibit B Electric 2024. C, medium commercial electric rate shown on Exhibit C Electric 2024. D, heavy commercial electric rate shown on Exhibit E Electric 2024. E, industrial electric rate shown on Exhibit E Electric 2024. F, power cost adjustment, showed on Exhibit F Electric 2024. G, special electric service rate shown on Exhibit G Electric 2024. For such terms, that the rates in charge are described in this section, right? Clarksville Connected Utilities shall continue to charge and collect rights according to rights schedules that were affected in major practical improvements. Rights, all previous life- through life- through charges and complaints of this section shall be restored, including any of the rights in charge described in this section. The right in charge, as it describes in this section, shall not be covered by the Clarksville Municipal Code, and Clarksville Connected Utilities, as you are given my technical ability, while applicable, charges must be addressed and managed in accordance with public inspection. Section 9, under the Clarksville Municipal Code, 10.04.13, Section 10.04.4.3, to the Clarksville Municipal Code, hereby leaving the place with the following, 10.04.13, established by the City of Clarksville, the Department of Transportation, and now charging fees, which may include A fees to recover costs raised for the city's treatment program, B fees to monitor and inspect and maintain surveillance of wastewater discharge and wastewater control facilities, C fees to review accidental discharge for procedures of construction, D fees for permanent applications, E fees for following appeals, F fees for consistent removal of city and local standards, G fees for wastewater discharge permits and wastewater containment permits, and I, other fees as stated in my statement, to carry out the requirements contained. These are the terms to be set, and shall not exceed the amount that can move like the average policy term of Clarksville Connected Utilities, provided services as described in the document. These are described in this section, so we would like wastewater services provided by Clarksville Connected Utilities, except for all the fees charged by the City of Clarksville Connected Utilities. Section 10, then the Clarksville Municipal Code, Section 10.04.14, first receivances of Section 10.04.15, currently discovered of Section 10.06.14, the Clarksville Municipal Code, a requirement which reads as follows. 10.04.14, our mental part, all significant users for us proposing to connect to or to create to a KLTW shell, a ton of wastewater discharge permit before connecting to a drip into the KLTW, all existing significant users connected to or attracted to the KLTW shell, a ton of water. Wastewater contamination permit within 360 days after the effective date of this ordinance requires. Users required to plan wastewater contamination permit shall complete follow-up information and application, before prescribed, by the commission and the company, without fees that would spot information. Reminder of this section, shall we preserve with the city within the Clarksville Municipal Code, as currently stated, Section 11, separability. The provisions of this ordinance are declared to be severable, and if any part of this ordinance is unadvisably unlawful or unenforceable, reminder of this ordinance shall begin to be effective 12 months, which appeared in all the ordinance as part of ordinance and conflict here, where appealed in the extent of this conflict, Section 13, effective date of this ordinance shall be effective 39 days after that.
Uh, we'll open it for discussions, questions. That Roy here is kind of walking through it. Roy, I've got your files pulled up here.
Okay.
Tell me which ones.
Just start at the first one over there. This, this is just a couple CPI indexes we pulled from the internet. I mean, there's, there's two of them, both of them, one of them shows 28.2% increase in the last 10 years, as you can see. And then the next one...
Does y'all have a rate study now?
No, with the, the commission was, I mean, we're... The funding's just really not available. We need to, we need a deep dive rate, rate study, actually, we really do. But the funding it would cost to get it done.
I know in the past, they've always done a rate study, and then they come to council and we approve, you know?
I'm, I'm, I really hate to tell you this, but I'm afraid if we really done a real true rate study, you just, we can't eat that elephant. That elephant's bigger than this one, sir.
Are you losing money?
Yes, sir. But we've been losing, we've been losing money too long.
To what extent?
The...
What was the last audit?
What was it?
497.
497,000, and the year before that, 800 and something thousand, I think, something like that.
1.3 year before that.
So what you're saying is the rate change that we made?
If we, if we make too much of a rate change at once, you're gonna scare people away. That man sitting at the end of that table right there can't get no businesses in here.
But if we don't make them incrementally, then we're gonna eat the elephant, as you said.
If I, if I take that elephant one bite at a time, we can control that. That's what I'm trying to do. That's the reason why I'm trying to get this implemented in small pieces.
So even though you haven't had a deep dive study, what are your kind of fundamental numbers based on?
The, the, we've been working with some groups outside the city. We, we got plans, you know, we got some things coming, and we're hoping it comes. If it comes, we'll have some money coming in. If it doesn't happen, I'll be back in a couple of years.
But what I'm...
If I'm still in this chair, I will be back.
What I'm asking is, um, what you're gonna ask for, I guess, tonight? What is that based on? How did you get there?
Uh, Mayor, will you go with that first email or that last email I sent you, please?
And if you need to wait, that's fine.
No, they're proposed.
We need to get that answered.
Uh, that's, if y'all will look at that one right there, while he's got it pulled up, that shows my 2014 rates, if you'll look over there.
Sorry, Susan.
At 2014 electric rates.
Hang on, this thing's all messed up here. Okay, there's...
Look over there, 2014 rates. You can see that the customer, that residential bill, what, $167?
Yeah, 167.
Okay, at our current rate, that same bill right now, costs a customer $139.
So you're, you're asking for a $7 increase?
I'm paying, charging that same customer $139 for the exact amount of value?
$28 less.
And your expenses are...
He paid $167, it's a change.
Roy, I, I did, I took your calculation and put it on my bill. It went from 16610 to 17618. And then I believe it makes resi- industrial go down a little bit, which is where we were struggling the most.
But you can see on the industrial, on the very bottom right there, lost, I'm losing $3,000 a month right there.
We cannot continue to lose money.
Right, but I, I can't take that all at once from these people. If I do, then what y'all did to make us go here, what I must say, y'all, what we did, what people did to get here over the last six or seven years, if you try to get that all back at once, you, you drive everybody out of here.
We were, Roy raised them.
Roy, we raised them two years ago.
Excuse me?
We raised the rates two years ago. Wasn't it two years ago?
Yeah, and then you went right back and lowered them again.
We lowered them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because we upset, we upset the customers. And went right back and lowered them.
It was too much of an increase back then, so...
So this...
Roy's asking for a smaller percentage increase right now.
Little bit at a time.
Trying to get him above water.
I don't have any problems with that. I just need to be able to explain it to people, why their, their electric bills.
So, so we had, uh, we had the happy, the infamous Happy Meal raise, and then Bill Hill and the commission got in and reworked all those numbers, and y'all reset that back in July of 2023, and we've been operating on that rate ever since. So what scares me the most, and this is the thing that I don't think I've heard anybody say, is your bond. What's gonna happen when the bank that holds your bond sees that your revenues aren't producing enough revenue to pay that bond back? What, what do they have the right to do?
They're gonna come after you.
No, not after us. Now, the city ultimately have to back that bond up, there's no doubt, that's the reason we're tied it to you. There is no us, us name. If you, if you default, the city general fund backs it up.
Backs it up.
What does the bank have the right to do? If your revenue...
Raise the rates to make...
They can come in and set your rates for you and say, here you go. They have every right in the world to do that.
But I, I'm, I'm honest...
To your point earlier, what I'm seeing...
Honestly, I'm gonna tell you, if we done a true deep dive rate study, and we can do one, with your permission, I'll, I'll get one done if I can get the commission to approve it, but I'm gonna tell you, it's, it's gonna scare your public to death.
Like you said...
You're gonna double your rates.
And you said if you did it incrementally now, and stave off the, what I call the bond wolf, um, you, you're better off to do it that way.
I'm just, I'm just trying to stay afloat for right now.
Yeah, come on.
Until I can, until we can see what's gonna happen, and if this, in the next two years, we can turn some money in, we might get this thing turned around. And if it don't, I'm gonna be back.
Just a, a little background, and there's a letter that's gonna go out to all of you here shortly, but if we kind of give you a State of the Union, I guess we'd say, in 2022, the loss was over $2 million. In 2023, the loss was 851. So we've, we've reduced that loss by over $1 million. It's $1,173. So Roy and his group have done about everything you could think of to cut those losses. Now we're at a point in time where the rates have got to change, and we could do a study, we could do a deep dive study, it would be a cost of about $18,000, and it would take about three months. But as we start moving into the, the scenario where we're generating our own, that could change the whole scenario all over again. So what this is designed to do is at least get us to break even over the next year, which we've gotta, we've gotta increase our reserves and stuff, but Roy's exactly right. If we went to what it took to get our cash reserves back to where they should be, we'd have a massive revolt, and, and Stephen could just go home. So this is a, an interim, I guess we'd say, for lack of a better term, but there's gonna be a lot of detail that'll go out to y'all here shortly.
Mayor, will you go to that email I sent you just shortly?
Now, the impact on the, on the adjustments that we're asking for on residential are really small, I'm seeing 20, 30 bucks. There's some examples that you'll see in the letter that goes out of, of an actual bill, and what we're proposing and what the impact is.
They'll not put the attachment on it?
I got this one. Jack, there's, there's some things in there that I wanna, I wanna discuss. There's fuel adjustment, y'all have relabeled it power cost adjustment. Yes. There are some things in there. It used to have four items that went into our fuel adjustment, now there's like 14. I don't understand that, and we need to go through those one by one and figure out why it went from four to like, whatever the actual number is. We'll look at it in a minute. Your power cost adjustment, you no longer have fuel adjustment.
Right.
You have power cost adjustment. Fuel adjustment used to have four different things, ancillary fees, power cost, then you've got, uh, the cost of energy, capacity, transmission, ancillary fuel, internal administrative costs, consultants, energy management services, professional services, risk management services, and the like. I have, I have some heartburn over that paragraph, just to be honest with you.
Honestly?
Yeah.
There's another part of that also, and I, I'd like to... It says that the, uh, the city to adopt rates and delegate authority over fees as described in this ordinance, but it never describes anything in the ordinance. So are, are you, are you taking away City Council control over the rates, or? What they're, what they're asking for is to get control up to a certain point. In other words, set a, set a threshold that says anything below this, the commission could do, anything above has to go to you guys.
So let, let me explain it. So let, let me explain it. I talked to Ed Bradley early this week about this. And so if you, council will go back to the very first page of the ordinance, where it says, Susan, you got this one. It says, I'll wait for you to get there. Okay, council, see you with me on the first page where it says, whereas on or about eighth day of May twenty-twenty-three, the city adopted ordinance number twenty-three-nine-one-one. Everybody see that?
Yes.
So on that date is when, after the, the whole landmark audit, we come back and we reset the commission and we reset the ordinance and we set everything in place. In July of twenty-three, we passed ordinance twenty-three-dash-nine-one, nine-one-four. Does that make sense? Nine-one-four is the exact verbiage that you're seeing before you. We've, we've identified the wrong ordinance in this ordinance. That should say we're modifying twenty-three-dash-nine-one-four. Because if you, if you, if you approve this one, deny, and there's a, there is a, a. Power cost adjustment. We'll look at it here a second. Yeah, we'll look at it here a second. Let me finish explaining this. So if this ordinance in its fashion was passed tonight, you essentially would repeal the ordinance that was first done after the landmark CPA audit and the reset. This should say twenty-three-nine-one-four. Because two months later is when, after Bill Hill and the commission redid the rates, we got all that set, we, we took this ordinance and adopted it in a separate ordinance. So we don't want to repeal anything that would conflict. By leaving that as twenty-three-nine-eleven, you essentially repeal the ordinance that established the commission. Does that make sense? So we need to change that language first. And then twenty-three-nine-one-four is the one that has this language. You know, paragraph by paragraph. So on, on yours, on the power cost adjustment, Exhibit F Electric, you got this monthly power cost thing in here. This is on page fourteen. You're on page sixteen. Item number three, it's number four. So let's make sure the councils all got the same thing. On your page fourteen, does it say power cost adjustment? It's got paragraph one, two, three, four, five, six.
Mine is item five, power cost adjustment.
Yeah, under item number four, does it say monthly power cost?
Did y'all send the one I sent to you in the email? The one I sent the email is the most current copy.
Roy, see if that's the right one.
Is this the right one?
Barbara's got something there.
This one.
This is the same one that I asked, well, does that, mine says draft and commission discussion on that.
Yeah, that's what mine's doing.
Yeah.
That's, that's the draft.
Okay, so that's not what we want right now?
This is.
I wondered why we were voting on the draft.
You sent us. These are the attachments.
So we were just given the.
Yeah, I'll give you one with the lines on it, and then the clean document.
Clean document.
That's the draft. And you should have a clean document.
Can we, can we have a special council meeting? How do you just go over these documents and make sure we get the right one?
Oh, there it is. It is.
Not here tonight anyways.
We have the clean document in our email.
I read that, but it's, it's almost.
It was labeled clean. It was labeled clean. Yes.
But this does say number two-three-dash-nine-one-one. Not nine-one-four, is that right?
Yeah, everything I've seen on power cost adjustment is redlined out, but this is a draft doc.
It is a shorter read.
Yeah, Barbara would like it.
Are the numbers right on the first page?
Yeah, that matched what was on the draft. No, 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 it should say twenty-three-nine-one-four.
That's right.
Yeah, this one still says twenty-three-nine-one-four.
Is it an emergency that we get this passed tonight, Roy? Or do we need to? What, what's the timeline on this?
Our goal is to have the new rates.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Duncan. Can I get Mr. Roy to answer this question?
I mean, we can use it as soon as we can get it, but we definitely want it by October first for sure. But I mean, we need to come back next, next month, I think.
How bad, Jeanette? How soon?
I'd like to have a, a special meeting to, to discuss all this. Because I don't know if we've, what Ms. Barbara read may not, is not currently into the record, is not what we're gonna pass. Well, I read the one in my email, and it looks the same except for this nine-fourteen that the mayor pointed out. But there's a lot of things in there that, and I feel like that we need to change, and one of them is taking the authority from the city council to change fees. I, I know. I got it.
You know, we, yeah, we can, we can motion for the first reading tonight and table it for the, we can call a special council meeting.
Ms. Small, were you up here to tell us something?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd ask.
Jeanette Small, CCU, and I just wanted to mention something about, we're talking about the revenues and our losses, but the industry standard for our reserve policy, which is critical for disaster. It's something that the ANFA group that we discussed when I was here early on when I was first hired, is to take the monthly expenses and then not consider the depreciation because that's not a real number. So if I took May, and then, which was two million, one oh-five-six-twenty-four, taking away the depreciation, that time, six months, should be in reserve, ten million, seven thirty-eight, and today we have eight million, four. So we, we are, we are in desperate need of, because as I say, month, you know, we're just, we don't have the reserves should we have a disaster. And I think that that was mentioned in, in Jack's document, if he, if you've seen that, but that, that's kind of like two different issues. Our reserves are, we don't have the reserves that we should have, as well as monthly, our, our revenues, the losses, which of course is just depleting our reserves. So we, yes, we.
So the, the bond requirement is a hundred and six percent, right? That's the threshold of, of our, above our, our cost threshold, right? That's what they look at?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
So if we're not generating a hundred and six percent, then they have at some point a right to come in and say, here's your new water rate, here's your new electric rate, you will stay above the hundred and six, hundred and six percent rate. That's the scary thing to me. The most of all of this, is they won't care about us when it comes to that. They're gonna care about how much they're supposed to be getting. So I, I don't disagree and I don't contest, but I think we, we're confused up here, at least I am. On what's the right ordinance, we've got some of the wrong numbering in there, and I think we need to clean that up and bring back a clean, well-documented ordinance, and then call a special council meeting. I think the council, plus we don't have Rob tonight, so I think it would be important for him to be here. So if you can give us another week or two, maybe, maybe then get the council together, come for another meeting and try this again, but it'll be the second or third reading at that point.
At le, at least in two weeks.
Yeah. You know, Roy, I want you, you tell me if I'm wrong, but you know, we had, we had a special project over there before your time and pretty much before my time. And it anticipated a cost of about seven million, and it ended up costing seventeen or thereabouts. So that's a large part of this problem. It's a huge part of this problem, so.
You know, that, that project beating our reserves as well as we're making bond payments on it.
Yeah.
And it's not helping matters, but.
Well, it's, it's not y'all's fault for the, the mismanagement that, that, that happened before. We just need to get it cleaned up and, and.
The thing is, is you, you can look at the twenty-fourteen rates compared to now, and if we still had the twenty-fourteen rates, we wouldn't be in this bad a shape. We, we could, eating, eating the elephant would be a smaller elephant to eat right now.
What did you tell?
I tell you, my bill ain't went down any.
How long have you lived there?
Huh?
How long have you lived there?
Twelve years.
I'll bet you a hundred dollars your bill has went down.
That's a bet.
He was twenty-fourteen.
No, 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 no gambling. This is, this is being, it's a dry county, no gambling county. We don't do that. We're not doing that. Okay, all right. So we have a motion to table this in favor of a special council meeting. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say the same. Thank you, Roy. Back to the drawing board. We'll get it cleaned up. Thank you, council. Uh, you, CCU, wanna give your report?
I'm worried about the lady that's drunk.
I know, but we're not a, we're non. We have to make money.
Stephen?
Yep.
Well, now, now.
Now we gotta catch up.
Yeah, we're, we're dealing with new stuff.
Yeah. Sorry, go ahead, Stephen.
No problem. Real quick, keep it short. Had CEO for the client that's gonna occupy the, the former Monroe facility in town last week. We spent all day with them, going through the building, discussing the renovation. They seem very happy, eager to move forward. So as soon as I have that lease in hand, y'all will see that next, next month, and I think we'll have that all wrapped up for y'all. We had.
Who's going in there?
We had the, well, the Brooksaw Triathlon is this Saturday. It's, it's crazy how fast that's come around, and Jackie's not here to defend herself, but she's been working her tail off. Pulling together sponsors, volunteers, making sure the race day program is squared away and on, on, on track, and we're really excited for that. We got a lot of folks coming in. So be ready to host them on Saturday. If you're a business, reach out to me before Wednesday. I'll be happy to put some material in our swag bags for you. And just stay clear of Highway twenty-one and the backside of Clark, on the north side of Clarksville. They'll be, they'll ride out there, so it's an open course. Just be careful. Don't hit any of our visitors. Any questions?
So it'll be all hands on deck, fire department, police department, street department, parks department, everybody's involved. There's gonna be, good thing, it's, it goes pretty fast in the mornings. Lake Lubbock, for the folks that live out there, it's gonna be really noisy, starting about four-thirty in the morning. Downtown around the, the Foundry Building, extremely busy, light sets, people dropping off bicycles and all kinds of things, so.
Yep, and we got the kids' race in the afternoon as well.
Race in the afternoon, so Klein, Klein Street, Klein Road, Clark, right, Jeff? That's basically it. Klein, Clark, and then back.
Yeah.
Be a busy time, so appreciate everybody's patience, and, and that's a big deal for this community, so.
Yep. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Chamber? Oh, it's gonna be Ray tonight. Look out. Yeah, we get the pepper the chamber guy. That's a really good question.
Ray Hobbs, Chamber. You have our report, but it is my pleasure tonight, Mayor, to introduce our new administrative director, Nikki Smith.
Welcome, Nikki.
Welcome. And since it was her first day on the job, I told her she didn't have to make no report that night, so.
You have my report, but I do have one thing that I need to speak with you guys about, and that is just confirmation or final revisions on the seasonal light pole flags. And we've got two different seasons we're looking at, spring, summer, as well as winter, Christmas, and based on the content of the flag that we had discussed for Christmas. I've got these mockups. And just need to pick one or pick one with a revision, so that I can go ahead and get those ordered. And would you like to start with Christmas, winter first?
Yeah.
All right, so with those, we chose, you know, these colors just based on, on the season, so if y'all have any revisions you would like to make or just approval of one flag, just let me know. And these, and one more note, whenever you see the two of the same color, we will be getting two designs, or we have the ability to get two designs and alternate those as you go down, so that it's not one, one design repeating, which is why you see the, the two designs that coordinate with one another.
So you need a motion to approve these designs?
Motion to approve a design to order.
The one that, the one that catches, catches my eye is Merry Christmas from Clarksville.
And I can do that in the green color as well. It just wasn't sent over in time, but it would be the, the other color option is the green that's shown on the right.
This one here?
No, you can get that design, but in that green color, yes. That's also an option. It's just not listed up there.
I like that green.
We've had red previously. It's a, of course, traditional Christmas color, so if you wanna change it up, it's, it's just the, the preference of the city.
Which one stands out best, do you think, in muted winter color? Yeah, does the red stand out better, or, I mean, I don't.
I took a poll of various people from the chamber, from the community, and I had three votes for red, two for blue, and two for green. If that means anything to you.
I really appreciate the clean look of the right side. These are beautiful. Thanks for bringing them.
Why you talking about these here? So you need a design?
A design.
Of these, of these things?
The red does fade faster, but it is in the sun umbrella material, so it will not fade as fast as the vinyl. And the ones that we've had for the past ten-plus years, long time, have been red, and they've not turned pink, but they have definitely faded. And if you have specific questions about that, I'm sure Stanley would absolutely love to come up here and talk to you about it.
What do you think, Stanley?
You know, I think about all the years I managed soldiers, and that one that chief concerned me to check for was where the red-green colored one. It's a bigger problem than you think, so I would tend to say the blue and white.
And if you like the clean look, as you mentioned, on the right side, but like the content of the left, we can also do that, get rid of the snowflakes, add those decorative pieces at the top and bottom. If you so choose to do that with a design revision, just to simplify it, we can do that as well, just whatever direction y'all would like to take.
Because it is nice to see from the city of Clarksville up there.
Yeah.
It is.
Very welcoming.
So, so that red one, the city of Clarkville, if you say it'd be green as well?
Yes, we could do that in green as well.
And, and blue?
Mm-hmm, we could do it in any of those three colors. There's more colors available. I just assumed we wouldn't want pink or purple for Christmas, so.
So Merry Christmas from the city of Castle, that is the, that is the preferred design from the council? Yeah, and?
I like that.
Red, green, or blue?
Blue.
No, 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 I was just laughing. No, I, I, she said about the red one, that it was, it was, it was fading, and I, then I went to the, I went to the green. But that's, you know, that's me.
I think the green looks beautiful.
Two greens, two blues.
I will seed the blue.
We got two greens and two blues. Three greens, two blues.
I think green goes with all the wilderness and activities in nature.
All right, green wins in the, from the city of Clarksville as it's presented, correct?
Merry Christmas from the city castle in green.
Okay, snowflakes and all?
Yeah.
Love it. All right, we've got one more design to go over, spring, summer. And the original design that we had presented had watercolor mountains in the bottom with using the sun umbrella fabric. We cannot use that color, um, gradation. Uh, it has to be more solid. Um, and so you'll see, we changed the design slightly, but it still kept the natural welcome home, welcome back. Uh, featuring the cyclists, which could be the mountain trip, mountain bike trails, as well as the, um, Spadred Nature Trails. Again, two designs we can alternate as we go. And I just need approval that you want that design or that design with a revision.
So we can have both?
Yes, you can have both of those. They would just, one would be Clarksville and then welcome home and
Yeah.
it would just alternate that way.
Yeah.
That looks great.
All right.
That'll work.
Motion approved?
Yeah.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
All right.
All against, say the same.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Chief?
Yeah, my report.
Cody? Where's Cody at?
Yeah, I got my report. I just wanna tell y'all, uh, hey, Steven's underselling himself. He's done an amazing job. Just real fast. Got a guy that's bought some lots. I fix see a lot of construction going on. Also, we had a gentleman that stopped here two weeks ago for a cup of coffee at Hardee's, I guess. Love Clarksville. He's actually gonna move a piece of his business from Texas here, so twenty to thirty thousand square foot building. So, and y'all get a special permit probably next council meeting for approval on that. So, you know, the question is, sorry.
This coffee, this coffee place out front has been, it's worth its weight in gold for us.
So, could I ask you a question, Cody? Um, when you said you're going to see a lot of building, are you talking about residents?
Yes, yes. I had one guy reach out to me, just bought twenty-nine lots. He wants to do at least seven a year on those. Uh, and a couple of people looking at some subdivision options, so.
That's good news for our city.
Yes, yes, definitely, so. Uh, they, they, all these builders are starting to see the development and, you know, they're like, hey, we need housing, so they're, wanna start building.
Wait till that first data center hits.
Yes, yes, definitely.
Thank you, Cody. Brian? We got you confused earlier, I'm sorry.
Brian Burnett, Clarksville Airport Commission. Thank you for your support on the taxiway extension. It's been a long time coming, but it is in our, that's our capital plan. It's going, going to schedule. We got our bids in on the AWAS. Our bid, it was a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars over. So we'll get back with Garver and see what we can do to reduce scope. Uh, we may need to ask the city for, uh, maybe some help building a road, access road or something. It's what happens on these, like contractors, they don't do that themselves. They sub it out, so it's usually, they put a lot of fudge in there because they don't know. And that was the majority of why it went over, so I think we can still do it. Even if, if it comes back like it was before, we can still postpone it a year and, and still get it done, so.
What is that? AWAS is the?
Automated Weather Station.
And that's crucial to airport growth, right?
Yes. Yep, right now they have to get it either out of Fort Smith or Russellville and, uh, those that fly know the weather's there not, is not always the same as here, so. Uh, it, it will, it will actually help, uh, with precision approaches. It allows airplanes to get into Clarksville with lower weather conditions, so.
Appreciate it. It's nice to see the growth out there.
Keep going. Thank you for your support. Yeah. The. We're, Jim's still working with the FAA and, um, we will have a displaced threshold for a while. So, I mean, it's there for takeoff. Uh, technically, you can't land on it. You have to land past a displaced threshold, but you can taxi and take off on it, so.
That's why I asked, we had a CEO come in this, at the afternoon and
Right.
They asked that question.
Yep. We're, uh, we haven't got an answer from them yet, so.
Brian, the last time, the last time I was out there, some of you follow up on, Kathy Franklin was there, got to meet her. Uh, she was very appreciative of everything. She had some, some, had some thoughts on the soccer field and all that, but she said, this let me check on that. One of our hangars is being claimed by Fort Worth Airport, and that's causing a big conflict.
One of our hangars?
One of our hangars.
Really?
And so because they were both competing, they wouldn't release, mainly because of the square footage.
Okay.
Because it's being claimed by both airports.
I'll have to check with her because that, I know we've had trouble before, uh, airports will claim airplanes.
That's right.
Yeah, and we got all that straightened out.
So there's some issue there.
I'll check with her and see.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, thank y'all.
Thank you, Brian.
Stanley? Mister, Mister red dirt guy? Y'all had noticed over on, on the Klein, Klein Road, there's a lot of red dirt now.
I wanna talk to you. I'd love for you to come here. I haven't seen you in a long time.
Oh, I'm up there playing dirt, standing over the street department.
So we do, I think a lot of us do see the dirt piles, but can you, uh, translate the dirt piles?
There's sixty-two thousand yards of dirt. We're moving from one end of the hill, cutting down fourteen foot, leveling off the ball fields. So you're, it's slow process, but we're getting there.
It looks like you're mining.
It's pretty much what it is, is a mining operation. We're on the last cut of the field on the, uh, be the summit in street. And we're cutting down there, still a fourteen foot cut up to there and moving down. We're started the drainage today. The guys looked like a bunch of pigs out in the mud. But it was a good time to move the track off because we couldn't use the dump trucks to put the pipe in. So, and we have, uh, got the base for the industrial park road down. Meanwhile, last week, we split crews and done that, so we'll have that road ready for gravel probably within a week or so and curb and gutter. And we'll let it sit and pack until we feel it's good enough to go ahead and asphalt or concrete what we're doing in there.
How much longer do you think, just for people asking to get, not, not the project, but that would be good.
Just the dirt work?
But the sidewalk.
The sidewalk?
For school.
We have a, it's gonna be a six-foot high bank at that. And I'd had a call from Wyatt and it'll build a while. We have a couple more boxes that eight foot deep we have to build for the drainage. Then we'll get, uh, Bowden to come in, put the curb in. And I mean, there's a lot going on there. There's driveways that gotta come in on that side as well, so it's gonna be a bit before the sidewalk. And I hate it. I know kids walk that sidewalk, but we also don't want them walking through the middle of construction either.
No, there's a ten-foot hole there.
No, and there's, there's driveways that are gonna be coming in there, so even if we built the sidewalk back now, you're tearing it right back out to put the driveways in. So it's gonna be an inconvenience for them for a while, and I suggested to Wyatt that maybe they look at busing the kids from there if they can instead of walking through there. Be safer for them anyway with everything that's going on.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Stanley.
You're welcome. Uh, everyone else is playing hooky tonight, so hopefully their reports are in there. AMP?
We approved, uh, five thousand dollars to the, uh, chair board.
Yeah.
And, uh, we also approved three thousand for, uh, the, uh, auction and mainly it's a country music show out on Highway twenty-one.
Okay.
Uh, Mike Nichols putting in and, uh.
From the Ozark Mountain Hoedown?
Mm-hmm. Yep. Oh, nice.
That's it.
Uh, Trevor? Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We are adjourned. Thank you, council.